It's six thirty-two, we're getting rolling. For those online, thank you for patience, we're getting warrior cards. If you need one, find a football player through their advertising on Facebook and you know somebody, so support the team. Oh, real call.
Neil.
President.
Thomas.
President.
Jennifer.
President.
Grant is here, Michael's excused, Juan is excused this evening. Call the order and it's actually. I pledge allegiance. Okay, so our first item tonight is a budget hearing. So the purpose of a public hearing is to obtain public testimony or comment before decisions are made by the board. Joe Pratt's gonna give a presentation, after that presentation, all attending members, public will be provided an opportunity to speak on the topic. Presented if they desire. Public hearing testimony is separate from our public comment, so you don't have to sign in, if you're here, stand up, we'd love to hear from you. We ask you to limit your time to three minutes or less and begin by stating your name, just for recording purposes, make sure we're following up with the right person. And if you need to speak about a different topic, we'll have another time for that, so this will just be for the budget hearing. So that, I will turn it over to you.
Yeah. Okay, so when you guys adopted the budget last July for the twenty-one, twenty school, twenty-two school year, we, lots of things have changed since then, and at that point you approved what were the maximum amount of expenditures we can spend as a district? And as the year rolled on, we found that we need to increase that a little bit. So the current, originally approved expenditures were thirty-five million, five hundred and thirty-six thousand. The budget extension will authorize the district to spend up to thirty-six million, five hundred and thirty-eight thousand, just over a one million dollar increase. So why is an extension necessary? There are lots of contributing factors, these are a few of them. So teacher contract negotiations ended in October, which was four months after we had prepared the budget. And so what happened in negotiations ended up being different than what we had originally budgeted. Increased meal participation, so when we pay so that XO per meal, and with meals being free for kids, there was a lot more participation than it had. We had anticipated, so we ended up paying so more. And then throughout the year, there were several larger expenditures that were approved by the board, a few are listed there. And then the last topic is how we're gonna fund the increase. So in May, the state legislature gave us enrollment stabilization funds. We had increased food service revenues because we were operating what's called this, we were able to feed all kids because we were technically operating the summer food program, which reimburses at a higher rate than the regular school lunch program. We received LEA or local effort assistance stabilization in May as well, and we are using SRT two funding to pay for some of the costs as well. Any questions?
You're gonna get to the, kind of the bottom lower, that leaves us, projection.
When I do my monthly reports, you'll see that.
Okay. And for members.
Community questions?
Do you comment?
And are there some online, Justin?
Yeah, I'll reach out.
Does anyone online, please put your name in text, and Justin will give it to us, we'll call on you. Give it a minute here. Have a question back it up, the extra fencing, this is the, we, that's the we've approved to move forward with, we haven't got bids on, or this the fence that we did early in the year. Okay.
But they're all, all the costs are things that have already been occurred, we're not asking anything new, it's just projects that have already been.
Gotcha, thank you.
No response, right, Justin?
No, we're good.
Okay.
Okay, no public comments. Or in, do you wanna make a motion to approve the budget extension?
Oh, not.
That's just great.
That's. Yeah.
Good.
I missed a meeting. No idea what I'm doing. Thank you.
You're doing just fine.
All right, now we're moving to public input for opportunity to put to address the board for things that are on the agenda.
No comments.
Nothing to be signed in, have we signed in online, okay? So item four, additions deletions, we have a deletion of the highly capable grant approval, it was ahead of seven, I think it's not ready.
Not really, it's from state.
Okay, so I would move to approve the deletion of the highly capable grant approval discussion for tonight. Your second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, imposed. It's three of us, it's easy to count. All right, consent agenda, so we had minutes from last meeting, voucher payroll, quite a bit of hiring, it's great, leave of absence, some contract updates. And a second reading policy, reviewed the last meeting. Any questions or comments about anything in the consent agenda? If not, could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
This is Neil, I will move that.
Thank you, Neil. Second?
I'll second.
Next to us, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we will move to reports, kindergarten roundup.
That would be me.
Right.
I. Got it.
So in years past, we have a roundup to introduce our kindergartners to us, our incoming kindergartners and us to their families. And we haven't really been able to pull off an in-person one, for you know, the reasons that shall not be named, the years old, the more type things. And we were able to pull one off, we weren't sure if we were gonna be able to do it until literally August first, because there are a lot of factors at play. So if you say roundup, a lot of people imagine this, and while we are a somewhat rural community, we don't have them go through those activities. We have them go through some other activities, if you'll please advance, ma'am. The whole purpose of our roundup is to let our families get to know what the school looks like and some of the expectations. It's one thing to tell a family, your child will be responsible for getting his or her own food and opening it and sitting down at a table with a tray. It's a whole other thing for this family to come into the gigantic gym, to see the tables set up and to experience trying to get into those tables themselves. We want to learn what assets each of those children are bringing to our school, they all come in with skills and abilities, and we'd like to know so that we can have variety in the classroom. We don't wanna have a whole classroom of the exact same kind of learner, it doesn't create a realistic experience, and we need to see what we're working with. Each activity that we have the children go through and the parents go through has multiple purposes, we learn multiple things from each experience. So it might just look like you drew a picture of yourself, but aha, we know lots about you from that. And like I said, we share some of the school experiences with the families, and we wanna humanize the experience, these people are bringing their precious children and leaving them all day with us, that's a really big deal from the family perspective, and their kiddos need to imagine something. So on those nights before kindergarten begins, they kind of have an idea what to think about, rather than some unknown thing which gives them tummy troubles, if you please advance. So at the very beginning, the folks walked into the gym foyer, and they were greeted by either rice center people, so Nancy Villanueva, or Esmeralda Milliken, or our school counselor, Sarah Gerberkai, we checked to see if the child was actually registered. Are there any missing papers that we might need to remind them to bring? We check the ID of the parent to make sure they really are the parent of the person. So in that right there, we want parents to know that we're taking security seriously, and we really do wanna know who you are, and you better have your ID because I'm not letting your kid go with you until I know the kid belongs with you, getting them acrimized to that.
How do we verify that, that that person is standing there?
Because we've got their.
Different names.
If your name does not match what we have in Skyward for you, no way Jose, we're that picky about it, and people might say, well, I just got married. Yes, so where's your person on the other, you know, part of this that has ID that matches? Because we have the responsibility to the sweet baby children. Students are given a clipboard with a form on it, that they'll take that clipboard to each of the stations. So we're watching about hand grip, we're paying attention to this kid automatically hands something off to mom or dad or grandpa, or do they have a sense of responsibility? The parents are given their own information sheet to fill out, we're double checking addresses and phone numbers, and there's also a section about, what do we know, need to know about your kiddo? And we ask them some questions about, you know, are they able to do this by themselves or that by themselves? So the parents sit on the cafeteria side of the gym, on those very uncomfortable tables, filling out this and watching from afar as their sweet child is delivered to what we call the wrangler, the person in the middle of the gym who helps keep children moving through each of the activities, because we'll have up to twelve kids at a time, and there are four activities and a photo booth. Also on the tabletops, we have information for families about the food practices. If you're sending home lunch, please make sure your child can actually open their things. Gogurts are the bane of my existence, very difficult to open, short of tearing them off with your mouth, and you can't do that for other people's children. The Great Value puddings have the most adhesive of any of the pudding. So we give this information, now, for example, letter names, on your right, you have Mrs. Jager, one of our kindergarten teachers, and on the left, a person who's going to be a kindergartner next week. So she has in front of her a card that has both capital letters and lowercase letters of our whole alphabet, but out of order. Everyone can probably sing a song that doesn't tell me you know your letters. And so they, each of the stations starts with a little bit of relationship building, chit chat with the kid, goofing whatever, and then she points to letters. We usually start with the letters of the child's name, can the kiddo recognize the letters in their own name? Then we go to other letters, and we get them both uppercase and lowercase, because we wanna know what the kid's experience is, how much literacy experience do they have? We are looking for flexibility of thought, one child was very irritated and informed, Mrs. Jager, this is wrong. It's A, A should be in the first box, so great, this kid knows the letters by sight and by name, we need to work with you on flexibility of thought now. Things don't have to be rigid in just one way, and then we're looking for associations, some children are going, that's B, B for bat, they know some of these things. And that's what we're learning at that station, if you please show the next slide, talking. So in the back, you'll see a blonde lady leaning forward, that's Candace Robinson, who is our, just for our own primary school EL instructor specialist. And the gal crouched in front of her is Alona Ramirez, no, that's Becca Nakano, another one of our kindergarten teachers. The little girl that's sitting at that table was so uncomfortable being away from her family, even though they're just over there on the other side of the gym. And nervous about the whole experience, Mrs. Nakano took her through the whole event, went to every single station. And I bring that forward because we know this is nerve wracking for the children and their parents. Everyone has the same really weird experience at a loud, large, well-lit space. And this is the sort of thing all of our staff do for children, to make sure they're okay and show their best. So back to the talking, we ask them, what is your name? How old are you? What is your favorite food and why? Do you have a pet, and if they don't, what would you like for a pet? We're looking to see, do they have a response that makes sense in any way, shape or form? If we're asking them about their pets and they're talking about cars, okay, that's interesting. And we're also looking for articulation, can we understand you easily, or do we have to put on our auntie or uncle ear to understand them? We're looking for expression, do they use faces, voices, are they talking with their hands? Do they look at us, do they look away, are they spinning around in their chair? That's what we wanna know from the talking piece. We're also looking for self-regulating, back in the day, we called it, are you able to manage yourself? So that's our wrangler on the left, Lindsay Pontez, and we have a little kid there with his clipboard, he's got really good left-handed fine motor grip. So she's helping the kids wait their turn, because there might be two or three kids in front of you for the next activity. So can you hold your clipboard or do you lose it? Can you handle waiting as much as any five-year-old can? Are you watching, yes, please watch to see when that next person leaves? Are they distracted by the environment? Are you okay needing new adults in a safe environment when your family's over there telling you it's okay? And then we have, this is Mrs. Pontez, or Mrs. Ramirez on the right, the child across from her, we asked them to, you know, again, although we get to know you activity, we asked them to write their name. It's interesting what some people think their names are and what letters go with that and shapes. And other children can write it perfectly, including the capital letter. And then we want you to draw a self-portrait. This tells us about fine motor grip, do we have the kid with the whole fist death grip on the crayon or the pencils? We give them multiple utensils, do they have something like a typical grip, do they have the grip? And if you'll go on to the next piece, okay, so I do have an example of one of the pictures, we'll get to that in a minute. Then we go to accounting, I don't know if you can see, but on the table is a mat that has a variety of shapes that are listed from the top of the paper to the bottom of the paper. They are not one, two, three, four, they're all over the place mixed up, which it did upset that other child who didn't appreciate, A was not first, this upset him too. We asked them to count, and we're looking to see, can, do you have a strategy, like one, two, touching each item? Do you have a strategy that works for you? Because some children will go to the shortest row, one, two, three, four, and they go back up to the top, five, six, seven, eight, and then back up to the top. Go count to twelve or whatever, no, honey, there's four there, but that tells us something. We're looking, do you know the names, we give different colors in case that floats a kid's boat, those are the sorts of things we're looking for there, and that's Ms. Maryfield, who's left shoulder, you see. So we have a photo booth, which is not really a booth, but whatever, we wanted to be able to take photos of the children. So on the whiteboard, one of us writes their first name, the last name on the whiteboard, hold it up in front of you, and we want you to smile because we're not gonna remember who you are later, we saw ninety-five children, after a while, there was a boy and there was a girl, I don't know who you were. But this helps us go back, because then we have a file of all of their pictures, which will help us with some of the beginning of school activities. In addition, we're talking about the, you're a warrior, and it's so exciting, isn't this lovely? We took all kinds of photos, goofy photos, regular photos, so everyone can be as comfortable as possible. So this is one of the record sheets for the teachers, and I chose one that has very little written on it, because the teachers will write notes very specific to the child to give us a clue, so when I go to build classes, I get the variety of kids in the class. Your possible score total was three, one, two, or three is what you ended up in each of these sections. So this kid had a three with responding to the prompt, his answers made sense, they were in line, three with all of the articulation expression, three with the one-to-one correspondence, a three knew almost every single letter in the alphabet, and then the next page, please. This kiddo could, got into three when it came to holding pencil correctly, drew an actual self-portrait, spelled name correctly, and whatever the other one is on the other side. Participation, were you willing, and we checked by each center, because maybe some kids are not into the letters, they just don't wanna do it, but they're really into the other things, and we're also checking about your ability to focus. So this kiddo overall is really doing well, so we're looking for kids that is more able academically and more able with the participation, this kid's ding 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 hitting it. And then if you'll go to the next slide. It's a self-portrait. I'm looking at this, and I see a big round part and another shape, maybe a tail with spikes? So I'm wondering, what is this, was this really a self-portrait, did my friend go on another tangent in his brain? This also tells me about his pencil grip, just looking at that, this kid knows a lot of things. This kid doesn't spend a lot of time with paper pencil activities, so that will let his teacher know this kiddo's gonna be important probably in this area. Next one, please. There's other input we get when we go to build classes, the parent form has information that helps me know this kid is this kind of learner, but probably I can match better with that kind of a teacher. And we have their preschool transition forms, if there's a statewide form, and the Thurston County has personalized hours. And we get those from our Head Start counterparts, from our E-CAP counterparts. We have our own within, you know, our own special ed preschool, our own TK kids, and we use that to build a better picture, so we can put together classes that have variety. And there's another one. This also gave us an opportunity, once the kids are through all of the activities, we had them exit out by the playground. And one of our special ed parent educators, Tori Dahl, was down there. She handed them an otter pop, because that is the gold standard of awesome. And then she gave the kids, pick a book, any book, and she gave the parents this information. Some of you might be familiar with this graphic, twenty minutes a day of either reading to yourself or being read to is a great, big, darn deal, because the kid in a year who is either read to or reads him or herself for twenty minutes a day, one million, eight hundred thousand words is what the child's exposed to. We don't care what language you read to your kid in, if your kid knows ideas, we can give them the English word for it, they need to have exposure to language and ideas. Now, the next kid who only reads five minutes a day, by the end of the year, they've been exposed to an additional two hundred and eighty-two thousand words, and the kid who reads one minute per day, that's like eight thousand words. So you think about the environments you've been as an adult, when you're learning a new subject, or you're really into something and wanna get a new hobby. The more you're exposed to it, the more confident you are with it. And then there's other research down below there that talks about what this typical profile turns into for like state tests and blah, blah, blah. So we also gave them, because I'm all about personalizing family, the only homework Rochester Primary School has is reading. That is the only kind of homework for my age band of children that has any research behind it that says makes a difference. So I also let families know, you might have more than one kid, and I realize twenty minutes with this one, twenty minutes with that one, twenty minutes with that one is unrealistic. Pick one book and have all three of your children join you on the couch, have that personal family snuggle time. You can choose a chapter book, any of our teachers can identify a decent chapter book that will capture the interests of a five-year-old as well as the interests of a ten-year-old, so it's one book, one family time, twenty minutes, win-win. Please, next, so this is like some of the books that we give. I wanna say thank you again, we have an anonymous donor in our community who four years ago, and then five years ago, gave a significant amount of funds. He wants to remain anonymous, and he just asked that we use those funds to buy books to give to children. So our librarian, she runs a book fair, and with that book fair, we get points to buy books and then discounts because she participates in all this training or whatever, so whatever that person gave us, we're able to take that and like triple the effect. So we have been in the practice for a very long time, probably fifteen, sixteen, seventeen years. If you get a book or two right around Thanksgiving time, because you know there's that long weekend, and you get another couple of books sometime around Memorial Day, usually one sometime in the middle of there. South Sound Reading Foundation, starting September of two thousand twenty, started delivering books to us that are donated to them. Some are new, some are used, if they're used or lightly used, so we were able to increase from four books. Our kids get more like nine or ten now, because of that generosity, because we're readers, you know, there's no point in learning how to read if you don't read. And we don't care what you read, just read it. Next one, please. The bus drivers, so the bus actually came, and we so much love that, parked at the very far end of our building where the bus is going to be parked, when the bus comes to drop children off or pick them up. Deliberately chose to have the families with the otter pop in the book march down, and by the way, from the gym side where children eat to the end of the green hallway is a quarter of a mile, it's actually been measured. So I want the families to experience that very long trek, and they got out and they got to meet, I think this is Kelsey, one of our new drivers, and then Leanna White, who's one of our very seasoned and excellent driver, then went through some safety things, Leanna took them onto the bus and put their parents, because that first step up, some of their legs are really short, and some of these children haven't played outside very much, they've got about a week and a half of leg exercises to get ready for this. It's a very big step, she showed them how to walk on and hold the rail, how to sit in a seat, I wanted parents to see how when their kid came home and said, I didn't see anything, they really can't, if you're this tall and you're seated on a bus, you're just looking at the metal side, can't see up the window, it's above you, and then there's the safety seat in front of you, so they really didn't see anything. And then they went off on their very lovely way. We did see ninety-five children in person that day, and we're looking at, I played the numbers after you and I talked. It is, after my fancy math, we have a hundred and sixteen currently enrolled, and I have fifteen registrations on my desk. So we're looking at about a hundred and thirty, and it hasn't started yet.
Ninety-five, that's really good.
It was nice to see ninety-five in person, but to give some sense, we typically run one hundred and sixty to two hundred. So I'm thinking they're all gonna come after Labor Day, and I might be coming back to you for Costco's, got a two-pack kindergarten teachers. Thoughts, questions, ideas?
That's great.
It's a really good experience, and I was so proud of so many people being able to, they're like, yeah, I'll come in from a summer thing, and then the parents were so accommodating. It was awesome, those kids just felt ready.
This was the first time you've done this?
It's the first time we've done it since two thousand.
Twenty nineteen.
Since twenty nineteen, he says, I believe him, because during the pandemic, it was too complicated, we did try a virtual version of it, spring of two thousand twenty-one, and it gave us some information, but it's super, we can't see the pencil grip, we, you know, even though it was with a Zoom, so we got to learn something, but the classes were wonky, as we didn't have enough information. But we've done this in the past in other versions, we're just glad to bring it back.
That's great.
Miss Sasha away now.
Thank you very much, that's really good information, and thanks for making it happen with all your staff.
Absolutely, they're phenomenal.
It was great. All right, financial report. How about the all fund summary?
So at the end of July, the ending fund balance for general fund, with over two-point-one million, capital projects, three-point-three million, that's service, one-point-seven, ASB, four-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand, in transportation vehicle at a hundred and forty thousand.
All right, and then the budget status, July?
So that's, paints the picture about why we need a budget extension, at the end of July, the fiscal year is ninety-one-point-six-seven percent of the year complete, and our expenditures are at ninety-four-point-one-eight.
And then, board report.
And so these are, the ending balance right now is a little lower than you guys are accustomed to seeing. However, August is the month we receive the most revenue from the state. It's the beginning of a new fiscal year for them, so they push off their biggest payment of the year till July. And we're gonna have an opportunity to maximize current, so things that we have paid for throughout the year, I'll spend August looking and saying, does it make more sense to charge this to SRT, does it make more sense, do you have anything that you need to move from lap to title? So that's what happens in August, to bring in a bigger chunk of maximizing revenue.
Questions for Jill? Thank you, great. All right, Jennifer, superintendent report.
Right. Up here. Sorry. What am I?
Yes, there we go.
Got it there, Justin? Okay.
There you go.
All right, all right, so the first thing that we have on this is about summer school. And so Maggie's here, and since she is here, I'll hand it over to her to just tell you a little bit about summer school, how many students were there and what the program was like this summer.
So we had two forms of summer school, we have our kindergarten through eighth grade, which is more of an enrichment experience or an intervention experience for all, most of our students, but we do identify which ones are invited, but then we usually open it up to all. And we had a hundred and twenty-four students participate this summer in our K-8 summer opportunity. They went through three sixteen-minute sessions, so there was a lit camp that really dealt with literacy and reading. There was an invention camp, which was our STEM camp, so lots of different inventions, experiments, we erupted a volcano one day from there, yeah, it was super fun, and then we had an arts and active camp, so we had not only just visual arts, but we had performance arts, we had some of our kids make commercials, which were hilarious. And so lots of different opportunities for our K-8, with a focus really feeling that they have a sense of belonging here at Rochester and at school. Our high school, summer school program, we call it Warrior Retrieval, this is an opportunity for high school students to retrieve courses that they did not pass the first time, or maybe did not complete the first time, so we had forty-one high school students, twenty-five from the high school, and sixteen. the first time. So we had forty-one high school students, twenty-five from the high school, and sixteen from Hart. Uh, of those, uh, of those, uh, forty-one students and of the, uh, we had fifty-four courses retrieved. So obviously more than one, uh, uh, more than one course for, for students, and that was retrieved by twenty-two students. So, uh, the students at the high school that attended, eighty-eight percent of them retrieved at least one course. At Hart High School, uh, they retrieved or completed, uh, twenty-three courses. I say completed because Hart runs on a kind of a different schedule. They don't end up having to retrieve something that they didn't finish second semester. They can just continue to move on throughout summer. So, uh, but the, those fourteen students completed twenty-three courses, and so that's eighty-seven-point-five percent of the students that participated in Warrior Recovery completed at least one course. Uh, we had two graduates, uh, so that's always the, the special thing is when we have those high school seniors that maybe did not get the, the opportunity to walk because they were short a couple of credits. We always try to make a bigger deal about them when they, when they, when they die, get their classes, and, and, and we, we cheer them on and give them their own little, you know, celebration. So it's always nice when I get a twelfth grader that we can be like, you're done! So, and so it, it, it's always a good time. I say it's, um, you know, it's, it always, you know, feeds my teacher heart that, you know, that I, it's one of my favorite things to do, is all the things. I love everything about my job, but one of my favorite things to do is, is really be able to reconnect with kids and, and build the relationships. Really, that's all why we got into education. So it always feeds my teacher heart when I get to head and spend the summer at the high school, so.
Thank you, Maggie, and thanks for everything you do with those kids in summer. They were two really good programs.
That's great.
And Joey Easley, can I, I'm sorry, I need to, I need to say this. So Joey Easley, who's our K-five interventionist. She has, she also is, uh, was an administrative intern, uh, has helped me run the K-A program for the last two years. She's amazing, phenomenal. I couldn't do it. It would not look the same without her. So that is not me, that is Joey.
Good point. All right, next, um, Justin, do you want to talk about this one? Because you worked with the new staff and did, between you and Maggie, did a great job seeing them for two days last week?
Yes, it was last week.
It was.
So, uh, last, last, last Wednesday and Thursday in, in this room, we, we hosted, uh, twenty-two new staff members, uh, here in the district, three of which are full-time subs, um, and seven of which, uh, we, we hosted everybody who started late with us. We brought them in for new orientation this year as well. So, because they didn't get, uh, the prized, uh, two-day event that Maggie and I put on, that everybody needs to, to, to have, right? So, uh, to get everybody, uh, um, you know, trained up the Rochester way. So, um, so for those, those couple of days, that first day, we, we really do start out, we, we start out first couple of hours with benefits. You know, what, what is, what does medical look like? When's payday? What's retirement look like, uh, for some of those folks? You know, we, we had anybody, we had people from zero years' experience to twenty-four years' experience join our staff this year. Um, so so, some folks are retirees, way, 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 way out there, and others, um, it's, you know, right around the corner. And so making sure that they feel real comfortable in what, uh, the, their personal side of things. Make sure, before we get into the business side of things and being a teacher, we need to make, take care of them as people first. Uh, we give them a grand tour of the, of the district. I show off Grand Mound, um, in our, in our grand tour, um, which is always a, a, a highlight until they see it, and then it's not. Yep, there it is. And they were so excited, drive by on the bus, then like, eh, all right. Uh, back to my phone. Um, and then we, uh, we went out to Gate, and we have lunch out of Gate, and Barbara Mansell gives us the, gives us some history around Gate School House, and that, I will tell you, we get back from Gate, and everybody's like, that is the coolest thing ever. I've never been on to a district like this. And then some of these folks have worked in a few places, that this is the best thing ever. And so they, they really like being able to go out there and have lunch, and then, and then, uh, you know, the next day, we really start jumping into, into some hard stuff and, and getting them ready so that when they go out with their staff, wh- when they go back out to their buildings, they have some knowledge, and they're not just deer in the headlights. So we've get, we, we give them a lot of information, and um, th- this year, um, we had our, we had three of our coaches come in and do, um, a couple ninety-minute sessions with, with them on, uh, classroom management, very specific ways to do some classroom management and deal with some student behaviors, um, which I think is, is, is going to, uh, help us a lot, so, and moving forward. But um, a- and it's always good for Maggie and I to spend two days with them. So now, like, today, when we were out, um, we, we were all together again at the middle school, uh, the whole staff, they can come in, they, they see some familiar faces. It's, it's not that, they feel pretty comfortable. And I got all sorts of questions, because Maggie says, just ask Justin any question, just ask. So, you know, I was telling Jennifer today, one of the, one of the folks who actually moved in, um, from out of state, emails me over the weekend. She goes, I heard you, I can ask you anything. Where can I find beef and, and pork? Of course, I knew where to help her find beef and pork, so I sent her some information on, on that. But yes, we'll help people anything. Restaurant. What do they gotta eat? Because you'll notice on the slide, we had three come in from California, one from, uh, Wyoming, and one from Florida. So, uh, but it, it is a really great group. Megan and I keep talking about how, how good this group of hire, uh, is, uh, right now leading into school. We feel really, really good about it.
Very strong group, and nice that we have the whole gamut of, you know, some with, coming in as first-year teachers, but then a lot who are coming in with some experience.
Yes. So, yeah, our youngest, uh, teacher was, uh, born in two thousand one.
I still have a sore shoulder.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Both Maggie and Justin for making that happen. It really does make a difference for our new teachers, for our staff, so. Uh, the next thing is just, uh, the work that we do with our instructional teacher leaders, the ITL Day, and that happened last week as well.
Monday.
Oh, my gosh, Monday? It's only Wednesday. All right, the ITLs were on Monday. Um, they were with us from eight until four o'clock, so a long day. And these are our teacher leaders who are going to be working, um, as leaders with our PLCs and, um, as leaders in our buildings. So, um, the team came around and really gave them a lot of information that they need about the initiatives that we have that are, are taking place in our buildings this year, and the work that we're going to be doing, uh, around, uh, teaching to standards and our social emotional learning and, um, and also UDL, or Universal Design for Learning. So really giving them the foundation so that when we saw all the staff today, they were ready to, um, I'm gonna zip forward. So we saw all the teachers today, they were ready and prepared to be leaders as we were working with the teachers today. Um, and the, you know, the principals did a lot of work with them today. So all of our staff came back today. It was the first day where all teachers were back. It was their first try day. And they started their day in the building, in their buildings this morning. So teachers had time with them, principals had time with them to kind of welcome and start to build the community and the culture in their building. Um, and that's what a lot of them did today, because we do have a lot of schools with new people, and not just new people this year, but new people from the past three years, because we have not really been able to have a day like this, where we brought all of our teachers together on the first day for three, three years now. So, um, there was a lot of time connecting and trying to learn about each other and build a foundation for the work that was going to be done in the buildings. But then at eleven-thirty, they came over, and we had a hundred and fifty-five teachers i- in the commons at the middle school. And we had lunch, and then, um, the Maggie shared with them um, some information about proficiency scales and, um, talked to them again about teaching to standards and how we were going to be working through, um, uh, the standards-based learning and, and, uh, teaching, or teaching and learning that we're going to be doing this year. And uh, then they were able to go back and work with teachers, or principals again, in different breakout rooms in the building. So it was a really good day with, uh, with our teachers. Um, the other thing that happened this week, it's been a really slow week around here, um, sixth graders, they, they returned yesterday. We had what they call sixth-grade jumpstart. So there were sixth graders in, uh, all throughout the middle school yesterday morning, and those kids came in, and boy, you could tell the ones who were a little bit unsure and not quite, you know, ready to step out and, and go for it all, to the ones who were just ready to, you know, rule the roost. We had one sixth grader, and I looked at him, and I was talking to a teacher, and he had put his name badge on his forehead. And I said, huh, we're gonna get to know him. And the next thing I know, it, his group had left, and he was running down the hall. It's like, so, you know, the kids, they don't take a lot, long to show their true self. But the kids were great. The teachers all came in, and they were working with the sixth-grade team, and we had some kids that were in classes already doing some work, and we had kids, teachers doing some get-to-know-you icebreakers type of activities, and a lot of smiles, and a lot of kids that were happy to be back in the building, and it really nice that we were able to bring them in before the seventh and eighth graders. Um, the other thing that's coming up that I want to share with you is Connect for Success conferences. Those, uh, this is the second year that these are taking place. They're gonna take place on August thirty-first and September first. Um, this is an opportunity for the families to come in, meet with teachers, and the teacher to get to know them, know the, the student a little bit, know the family a little bit, talk about what the students should expect, um, learn about some of their interests and who they are as a person. Maybe if they've had some struggles over the summer, learn about those, so we can support the students coming in. Um, but just start the, to work together as a team. We really want to make sure our families know we want to work together with them. Um, it's also a time for our families to get questions answered, for us to make sure that the right paperwork is signed, um, that we have information in Skyward that's gonna allow families to get into Skyward and access that information. Um, so just a real opportunity to sit down and share and spend some time learning about the students, and then for the students to learn a little bit about what's going to be expected. The other thing we're really doing this year is making sure our parents know some things that they need to expect, talking to them about what's on time to school. Look, we need your kids in school. Attendance is really important. Those are some big initiatives this year, because, um, gotta have kids in school.
I think Justin made a comment about the high school, about the dropping off of your kids. In this certain area, kick your kids out of the car.
You're right, and we've talked to Mike about it, so we're gonna see what we can do. The next thing that's going on is athletics. They have started. Um, I was out at the high school today, and they have this great Warriors sign on the, on the fence. I don't know if that's every year.
No, it's new.
Oh, it's very, very cool. First, I thought it was the, the solo cups. Um, and I wasn't even aware that they made the solo cups in the right colors, but they're not the solo cups. There's something kind of similar, but they hook onto the fence, and so the kids obviously have gone out and put it in the shape of the, of the Warriors. It looks very sharp. Um, but with that, um, all of our fall athlete, athletes are practicing now. We do have our first home competitions. Actually, golf had their first competition today. Volleyball, um, their first competition's on the sixth. The first home football game is on the sixteenth. And then our cross-country team has their first on the fifth. Um, I also wanted to take a minute and tell you just a little bit about the family income survey that we're doing this year, and um, I wanted to make sure that you are all aware that this year, um, the primary school, Grand Mound, and Hart, all of the students in those three schools are going to receive free lunch. So they received free lunch for the last two years. It is going to continue for those three schools for the next, for this, for the next four years. Um, and it's because they have qualified for the community eligible, eligibility provisions, uh, based on the, um, oh, the certificated programs that the families.
Direct certification.
Direct certification. There we go. The direct certification programs that the families have already enrolled in, um, such as, who can give me some names of them?
Tanner, snap.
There we go.
Apple Health.
Foster migrant.
Okay, so they're programs that the families qualify for. Uh, forty percent of the families have to qualify for those programs, and if the, if forty percent of the s- of the student body in the school qualified, then they, the building could receive the free and reduced, or the free lunch for all students. Um, our other schools are close. So the middle school was very close, but it, it's not close enough to qualify, so we are really going to be working to see and make sure we're supporting those families, because you know, this is one community, and it's kind of unusual that if we qualify with our elementaries, that we don't have the same families or similar in our, in our middle and high. So we're gonna work on that a lot. Um, our middle school and our high school students, they will have to pay for lunch unless the students have completed a, um, the, the meal application form and qualify for the free and reduced lunches. And they need to complete that form by Oc- October first, and we'll be working to really encourage families to fill that form out, especially if we sense that there is a need, and, um, that's gonna help them, the kids get not just meals, but everything else they need. Um, like, I started off by saying that we are working with families to do a family income survey, and part, part of being the, the CEP program, the free meal program for elementaries, um, is that we have to do a family income survey in our, in our district. And so all of our students, all of our families are being asked to complete the family income survey. It's a very quick survey. Um, basically asks, uh, you to just indicate, if you're a family of three, do you make more than this dollar amount? If you do, then you go down to the bottom and say, I, I make more, and you don't click anything. If, if you make less, you would click, actually, I think it says, do you make less than this amount if you're? Is that what it says?
Like, do you make this or less, right?
Yeah.
So you make your household, and you see if the income would fall in there, right? So it's arranged that by USDA.
Yep.
Not by us. And then, um, if you don't, then it would go down and say, I don't qualify. You know, my income is above the amount listed for my household. And then, um, a couple of quick questions. It takes about a minute to fill out the online survey. Um, it's very confidential.
And they submit it, and then they're good.
Who gets to see that?
Just the administrators.
Right. Yeah, actually, right now, it's just in Shauna's database, and so that's where it's gonna stay. Um, we will use the in- information as we apply for, um, grants and funds, but it'll be used as a large picture of our district, not a, these, these are the families who qualified.
It's an aggregate, yeah.
Yeah.
I was, I always, when I saw those forms come in, I'm always like, why do you need to know how much money I make? That, that's not your business. I mean, I'm, I can understand if I was applying.
For free meals.
For free meals.
Yeah.
I got it. But, you know.
There's a lot of additional funds that come, um, to a school district when you have a community that demonstrates that there's a, a level of need. Um, E-rate, where we get a lot of our tech, if we qualify, if we have a certain level of free and reduced lunch, um, students or indicators from this family income survey that we have a community with a higher level of need, they would, um, we get a better rate on our technology. Um, we'll be able to get different health services. We can get, uh, different, um, opportunities to perform in after-school programs. So we want the, we want a true picture of our community, but we also want to definitely can, you know, keep the information confidential so that people, um, aren't, we're not sharing the information with anybody.
And I'm just kind of curious, I, I keep thinking about the slide that you just came from, is how does a Hart Elementary School and, and the primary school, excuse me, they all qualify, but the other ones don't. I just, I'm, I'm trying to wrap my head around why that is. I'm not.
We are too.
I'm not.
Yeah.
If you're taking it from the, it's all from the same community. So if one qualifies, why wouldn't? And what's the factors of why that? Why they're not?
Families to participate.
Getting families.
Why they did. Is that all we need is to, you know, I mean, I know that's, I don't want to say that, is that all we need? That's a tough.
It is. It, we definitely need to, uh, we're, we're digging in, right? We gotta dig in, and that's the questions we're asking now, because we find that really unusual, that all of our schools haven't qualified, and there is a difference. We're gonna use, um, RISE, because RISE really will help us reach out to families where, and, and help them identify if there are needs that they would qualify for. And that might then qualify more of our stu- our families, which would then make us eligible for free, free lunch for the other buildings. But, yeah, it's, it's perplexing. Um, so we have a big, um, push going on here to try and make sure our families know about this income survey and, and take it. They're gonna, we're gonna talk to them about it at the conferences next week and ask them to take it. There's a QR code, um, that Jill and, and Shauna put together and have made it. It's very easy for the families just to look at a QR code and then go in and do the, the survey very quickly. But, um, we also, um, have a video. That is a quick video, and let's see if we can make it work.
Did you know, filling out the family income survey does more than just enroll students in free and reduced lunch? By submitting the survey, you're actually helping our district receive funding for all kinds of services and programs. By submitting the survey, you're actually helping our district receive funding for all kinds of services and programs. Things like health services, athletic programs and career connected learning programs, just to name a few. Filling out the survey is easy and confidential. You can fill it out in person, online, or even on your phone. Thanks for submitting the family income survey and helping us provide the best services for all of our students. Because lunch is just the beginning.
So just a quick reminder to, okay, why are we?
And so how is this survey gonna come out to us? Cause.
In a lot of different ways. Um, it'll be shared at the, at the conferences. It's gonna be emailed out. Um, uh, Mr. Smith at the high school already emailed, emailed a, I think it was actually in a remind message. And there was a link in there that families could do it.
Social media.
Social media.
I didn't get the remind, but I got, so I just got two text messages or email and a text message about the conference. I didn't see a link.
There might not have been in that link about the conferences.
Okay.
We're gonna be sending them out.
Okay.
Over and over again. And if you continue to not see it, let me know.
It's also being mailed, um, in standard mail.
And I called the school today. I don't want to throw them under the bus, but high school didn't return my call, didn't answer my phone call.
We were all in training all day today. So they were, they were all with us. Thank you for trying.
I will, you know, admit, it's been a very busy day.
That's fine.
Yes. All right. And, um, the last thing that I want to share is, uh, information about the new RISE Center. Um, our Ed and his amazing team have basically remodeled the, well, not basically, they did remodel the old library space. And it is now just a fabulous space for the RISE team. And Maggie, do you want to speak just a little bit about the RISE team and how they'll be using the space?
So RISE stands for Rochester Integrated Support for Education. Uh, this is, uh, uh, our, our way of really looking at dealing with the whole child and making sure that students are successful in their academics by looking at all of the different barriers that they may have to, to learning. So it may not just be an academic, there may be, uh, you know, family, family concerns, mental health concerns, you know, the barriers as far as shelters, first food, some, some basic living types of concerns. So we do have two, uh, wonderful people at the RISE Center, some liaison, Santa Fe and Awaiba and, and Rob the Milliken, who, um, are, are at, at the RISE Center. And this is really a dedicated space for families, for families to come if they need support. It is right next door to Rook. So as, you know, families are, are using one, one service, they can come to the other or vice versa. We can partner with our community organizations. It is a multilingual center for our families to come. So you, you do not need to speak English in order to, to receive support. Lots of different things come through RISE. Uh, so if there are attendance concerns, uh, that, you know, our community engagement boards run through RISE, our family events run through RISE, um, McKinney Vento Services, migrant services. Uh, a lot of our additional supports that we have for Kidos do run through Nancy and Esmeralda. Uh, as, as far as that goes, we also do a lot of parenting classes. We have English as a second language class. We have ready for kindergarten classes, uh, for, for our, our early learners. And also transitional kindergarten registration and recruitment enrollment also run through the RISE Center. So, um, this is, this has been a long process to try to get, uh, RISE, first of all, district RISE. Uh, why it was housed at, at the primary school last year. I was, uh, telling, uh, one of our new counselors, I said, this has kind of been an idea for, for about three or four years. The fact that it's actually coming to fruition, it is a huge full circle, I think, for our district and the supports that we can provide for families. Because your registry is unincorporated. There's not a whole, you know, the school district really is the hub for a lot of our families to, to find and access their resources. So super excited that we have this for our families.
And if you want to stop by and check it out on the way out, we can.
We, I, I will give tours.
Yes.
Awesome.
And I misled you, there is another, uh, slide here. It is a safety update. And I did want to let you know that we are, or that Ed is continuing to work on quotes for the fencing that, um, we looked at and have asked him to move forward with. Um, he has one quote back, he's waiting for two others. There's just really slow response. People are not responding real fast. They're busy, they don't have all the resources that they need to do the jobs. And so a lot of times they're waiting to see if they can get it before they're actually giving us a quote. Um, so that's one piece. The video entry system, Justin, do you want to give a quick?
It's on order. Uh, the company will be starting to, uh, roughen wire. Actually, they, they, they picked up keys and key cards so they can gain access to buildings. So they're gonna start roughing in wire. Um, the, um, the, the doors that aren't going to necessarily have the video system on, they have those parts now in stock, so they're gonna start working on that stuff then. But we're still waiting on the video stuff to, to show up installed back order, so.
We're, we're gonna get a pre-wire and so.
Yeah, yeah, it's, yeah. But they're gonna, they're gonna run all the wires for everything so that it's, it'll be lickety-split once they do get the, uh, get, get things. But so I think we're still on track for December.
And who tracks this at each school? The principals? Is there, is there a, uh, somebody at each school that's paying attention to?
That'd be me.
Just you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, the other thing that's a change in the, in the area of safety for this school year is we are asking all classroom teachers to lock their doors. Um, so just to secure our kids. Um, it does mean that teachers are gonna have to come up with a little bit different system because now the doors will be locked and if a student goes out to use the restroom or something, somebody's gonna have to let them back in. But, um, we know from the experience, when you look at all the, the shootings that have happened in schools, that they don't happen behind locked doors. The door, the door is preventing. That doesn't mean it's always gonna be the case, but it is a huge barrier. So, um, we are asking them all to be locked both inside the buildings and our portables. So they will all be.
When is the next time we're gonna talk to Ed about the fencing?
Um. Once, once we get some quotes back in, we'll have him come and talk just about.
What, what I'm asking is if we have one, because I know when we did the walk around, now he was saying the same thing, you know, we just can't get, you know, they don't want to do the job or don't have the people to do the job. At some point, we need to make that decision as to.
Moving forward.
Yeah, we're on, we've, we've been waiting on, we've got one quote, we've been holding on to that for, you know, ninety days now and nobody else is picking up, you know, make a decision.
He believes he's gonna have two other quotes next week.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
Yep, but I'm with you. I mean, at some point we gotta get.
Yeah, at some point we, we gotta.
Yep. And then, uh, just some upcoming dates. So you're aware, our teachers are back, they, their first try day was today, they're back tomorrow, and then they're back on the twenty-ninth and thirtieth. We have the staff breakfast on August twenty-ninth. If you want to join us, we'd love to have you. Um, can help serve, you can just sit down and eat whatever your choice is, but that's gonna be at the high school at seven AM. There's freshman orientation on the, on August thirtieth. On the thirty-first and September first, we have the Connect for Success conferences. And then on September sixth, that is the first day of school for our kids.
Who's gonna be at that staff breakfast at seven o'clock?
All staff district wide are gonna be there. So it'll be close to two hundred.
Two thirty.
Two thirty.
What kind of breakfast? Are we having to eat the food that, that the kids have to eat?
Oh, no. It's eggs, bacon, sausage, hash browns, parfaits, bagels, fresh fruit.
Yep.
You know, and the prices are the prices that we discussed at the.
Now, this is, this is purchased by the district for our staff.
Oh.
It's a staff breakfast.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, um, like we said, if you want to come and join the staff to eat or you want to serve to the staff and then eat with them, it's, oh, it's up to you. Love to have you there.
It'd be great if, if we could help serve and then join.
It'd be great to have you.
We'll have you out of there by eight, near deep.
Yep.
Good.
The other thing I want to put on your radar that I didn't put on this list is that we have October first as a board work day, which is a Saturday. So it's on the calendar that was, um, went out last May, but we can kind of make sure that date's working for everybody still, that would be good.
Okay. That was the one that went till fourteen hundred, right? That eight to, okay, yeah, because I got something.
Gotta spend all day with me.
All right, who drinks coffee? Okay.
All right, that's it.
Okay.
I'll take a few.
We used that by October.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Uh, so our next item is the budget, uh, extension adoption. So from our discussion, Jill's presentation, there's, we have a resolution twenty-two seventeen in front of us. You know, discussion on the budget extension. Which requires an increase of appropriation of one million, one thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one dollars. There are no questions, discussion. I'll, I'll make the motion to approve the budget extension, resolution twenty-two dash seventeen. Can you get a second?
I'll second.
Thomas? All favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we have a budget extension. Next item, new business is overnight and out of state travel. I think this is primarily focused for, for the school year for, uh, student, staff, athletics, clubs that get to participate in districts or nationals. So they can have pre-approval for those activities.
Right.
Anything then?
No, just, this is, um, this is what helps us if we have a cross-country team that all of a sudden qualifies for state and they need to go to state the next weekend and there's no board meeting.
Yeah.
Um, so we would, you know, this would give us the ability to just.
Pre-approved.
Yes, you're pre approving, exactly.
Types of activities, yeah. Okay, so no discussion, is there a motion to approve the overnight out of state travel as described?
I'll make the motion to approve or, right?
Yep, yep.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Neil. All favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? No? All right. And our next item in new business is teachers' assignments. Done this a few times now. Where we have a few teachers with, uh, that don't have the exact credentials.
Endorsements, right.
But this describes what endorsements they do have and I don't know how it's up. I think there's, there are eight or eleven of them here.
Yep, these are teachers who are, who we want to have teach this year, but they don't have endorsements to say teach a, a social studies course. Maybe they're gonna teach five periods of English and then they have a social studies class and they don't have the, the correct endorsement for that. Or, um, there's a few situations in there, I think, what, that they're, um, going to be doing some special ed, education and they don't have a special education degree. So these are, um, teachers who will be working out of their endorsement area. And for any time that we have a teacher that's working out of their endorsement area, the board has to approve that.
All right, any questions?
Um, Neil, uh, working out of their credentials, are they trying to acquire the credentials for what they're trying to learn to teach?
Many of, many of the times they are. Sometimes it's, um, like I said, uh, an English teacher who's gonna teach one social studies class. And she has the support of her professional learning community to work with her and, uh, probably not going to be getting a social studies endorsement. Uh, but if they are gonna be working, teaching the bulk of their classes outside of their endorsed area than they are. It does state on here where they are working or on some credentials, doesn't it?
It does, yeah.
And next question, um, how does that work with, um, their pay?
They still receive the same pay as our other teachers.
Yep. This level for these classes here, but they'll be to have something else out of their.
Yes, as long as you approve this. Yep.
Thank you. I think I've only been on the board about four years now, but I don't remember a year where we didn't have eight or twelve of these.
Yep.
I, I look at it as the, from a baseball perspective, if you have one person who can play multiple areas.
Yep.
On the field, that makes you more, you know. Makes you look like two players out here.
All right. So no other discussion, I would make a motion to approve resolution twenty-two eighteen, assignment of teachers unendorsed.
This, Neil, I'll approve. I'll second that.
All right. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Vote. Okay. This brings us to our second opportunity for public input for items that not on the agenda. I don't think anybody signed in, be online. Okay. With that, we are adjourned.